Good morning, welcome to the Trinity County Board of Supervisors on Friday. Happy International Women's Day, by the way.
Thanks.
Quick announcement, Supervisor Fenley will not be able to join us. He has a bit of a snow issue, we're told. So with that, I will ask Supervisor Brown to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. ........................................................................ Requested action, location, consent brought to us by Richard Coons. Requested action to move, to discuss, and/or take action to ratify a local emergency proclamation regarding the February atmospheric storm incident that found that the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is that without confirmation from the board by March 8, 2019, the proclamation will expire and the conditions are likely to continue beyond the March 8, 2019 date.
Do I have a motion to accept?
I move to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will hear that item at the end of the agenda. All right, moving on to public comment. This item, this time it's for information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must retain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. All right, with that, we will open up public comment.
I'm Kate Graves from Lewiston. I'm speeding up the process. Is it okay if I give these to Tina?
Sure.
If you don't want a copy or you have extra, they could be left on the back of the table if you don't mind. I wanted to remind everybody that officials of our government and certain employees take an oath, and I'd like to remind you of that oath today because, and give you the founding document, because nobody follows it. So I just read what you're supposed to follow, and it's not just you, it's everybody. "I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to endeavor." Oop, enter. So just thought I'd remind you, thanks.
Hi, this is Larry Glass, Safe Alternatives for our Forest Environment. I looked around the room today and it's like a 40-year reunion for SAFE. You know, it was 40 years ago that we felt the need to form a group to stand up and complain about the widespread use of chemical herbicides in Trinity County. Since that time, I think SAFE's done a good job of keeping this off your agenda. Over the years, as the agencies change personnel and they get new people on, they're unfamiliar with Trinity's history with chemical spraying, and so we go to them, meet with them, educate them sometimes. We can bring a supervisor with us and get them up to speed of how we do things in Trinity County as compared to everywhere else. And for all this time, the agencies have been pretty darn good about complying with us. You know, sometimes we have to go the next step up and go over the head of the local person, but usually it gets resolved and we get it worked out and they agree to continue abiding by the resolutions of the Board of Supervisors. So I apologize that I have to be here today to bring this to your attention, but we've tried that with the new people that we now have running District 2 of Caltrans, and we thought we had achieved some success. We thought they understood the history here and the will of the people, but apparently orders on high or wherever it's coming from, they are now ready to move forward. There was a meeting that was held at your road department headquarters on Wednesday, week or so ago, and they pretty much outlined their plan to go ahead and start in April spraying pre-emergent herbicides along a four-foot median along the roadway. At that time, they were promising to bring it directly to you for a discussion. Since then, their representative appeared in public and said that they didn't have to bring it in front of you, that they would just be able to go ahead and start. So raising the red flag to you, they need to hear, obviously, from our elected officials what Trinity County's longstanding position is. Please reaffirm that with them so that they're not going into this being misinformed, thinking that somehow whether this is okay, since apparently some county employees have given that impression to them. Thank you.
Good morning, Trinity Supervisors. I'm Susan Bauer from Peanah. And I first want to start off, because Caltrans is such a focus today, of thanking them for maintaining our state highways, 299, 36, and 3, in such good condition. And for the many years they have honored our policy here in Trinity County, as well as Trinity County itself has, and other agencies also. So I'm especially distraught to have Caltrans not even come forward, but really in an arrogant, autocratic way announce that they're not going to respect our policy anymore. And this especially at a time when there are so many serious questions being raised about these herbicides. And I hope that you, as our Trinity County Supervisors, will call a meeting, a public meeting with them, for them to explain which herbicides they will be using and how they can assure us of the safety of those herbicides. I'd like to point out just regarding one of those, the most used one in the world, and the one that has the most lawsuits against it for health effects, one of which was just resolved for $76 million to a school groundskeeper for the use of Roundup, which is this most used herbicide, with the main chemical being glyphosate. And glyphosate has been, not only glyphosate, but all, even home pesticide products have been outlawed in France, as well as in other jurisdictions throughout the world. And one of the major problems that concerns me is, of course, the cancer, the non-Hodgins But now it also appears, not just appears, but there's a lot of peer-reviewed science that glyphosate causes autism in children. And one of the scientists from Massachusetts Institute of Technology says in 2025, one out of two babies will be born autistic. This may not be exact, but it should be a warning to us. So please, please let's have that meeting to find these things out. Thank you.
My name is Richard Cole. I'm a member of your County Fishing Game Advisory Commission. We have this item on our agenda next Wednesday, but have not voted on it. So I want to make it very clear, I am speaking for myself and not for the commission as a whole. First, let me say, I live in Lewiston and was evacuated for 11 miserable and frightening days during the car fire. All that time, I did not know if I would have a home or a neighborhood to return to. But thanks to our brave and dedicated firefighters, our town was saved. So no one can say to me, "I am insensitive to the dangers of wildfires." However, our commission is charged with protecting the hunting and fishing resources of Trinity County and with making the hunting and fishing experience for our residents and visitors the best it can possibly be, so we can attract as many sportsmen and sportswomen as possible. If Caltrans puts herbicides, particularly Roundup and its carcinogenic active ingredient glyphosate, along our roadways, those chemicals will, with certainty, leach into our soil and plants and will wash into our streams, our creeks, and eventually the Trinity River. This poison will concentrate in prized game fish, like salmon and trout, and on land, deer and other animals will feed on contaminated grass and plants. The result? We will have to tell all our anglers who come here, "You know that salmon you intend to bring home and fry up to feed your family? It is potentially contaminated with carcinogenic herbicides." We will have to tell our hunters. "You know that venison you hope to barbecue up for your friends? It is potentially contaminated with carcinogenic herbicides." What do you think that will do to hunting and fishing in Trinity County? I spent last Sunday morning eating breakfast with a good friend and retired Caltrans district director. So of course, I asked him about this. He was very clear. Road crews and heavy machinery can do the same prior fire prevention job, but without poisoning our county. I strongly urge this Board of Supervisors to reject this lazy and dangerous effort to save Caltrans a few bucks at the cost of everything that makes Trinity County a sportsman's paradise. Thank you.
Joseph Bauer, I just want to make a couple points for you. I think that Caltrans will appear before you at some point. If they don't come voluntarily, I hope you will summon them to answer these questions. One of the reasons they're telling us that they must start spraying is for fire prevention along the road sides. I drive I-5 quite a little bit, and any year in the fall, you drive down I-5, there is fire after fire after fire. Even though they have an eight-foot dead strip on the shoulder and a four-foot dead strip on the median, they still have many, many fires. So it isn't really a legitimate excuse for them to come and tell us, "Oh, we have this change because of fire prevention." We're having this change because we have two new guys on the job that don't know anything about our history and think that they can fix any problem with a chemical. We have had, just nearly 40 years, Caltrans stopped spraying here in 1980 when our ordinances became effective. And mowing, and weed whipping, and brushing, sometimes with the inmate crews, have kept our roadways pretty safe. We've had a couple fires, but not many compared to all the fires that have happened along the road sides in California. So don't accept that as a legitimate excuse when they come to talk to you. Thanks.
Hi guys, Kevin from Paperwork. I can't believe this, really, we're here with this? With all the stuff we deal with in the cannabis industry, how can these guys possibly get away with anything? I have two years of testing showing not detecting anything on my product. If they come and put stuff everywhere, guess what? We're not going to be passing tests anywhere in this county because that's us going to go everywhere. If they want fire protection, well, they're going to kill all the bushes. I guess that's going to make them burn less. Doesn't make much sense to me. Goats do a real good job getting rid of brush. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Kelly Aldis, Duff City. I do want to say I support a public meeting on this issue because it's very important. Is this where we ask to pull consent items? No. Nope. Then I just want to say I support a public meeting. I'll be back.
Hi, I'm Gail Goodyer. I'm a resident of District 4. I am here to ask the Trinity County Board of Supervisors to include in their contracts with agents deliverables, particularly including quality of written work delivered. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, February 20th?
Yeah. And this is not because this is going to apply to another item?
Okay, well, I just want to say that I wanted to ask this be included in all contracts. I was going to come back later on a specific item. So anyway, I just want to say, please include the deliverables in all county contracts. This is, what's coming up on the agenda is, actually, has happened time and time again over a number of different boards and a number of different county administrative officers and the county council. It has not yet been addressed. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Duncan McIntosh of Junction City. I'm here to address the potential for sprays on our roadways. I'm a beekeeper, and my bees know no boundaries. And so as a crow flies, I'm about a half mile from the highway, and we're not talking about spraying a little bit here and there. I mean, what do we have? Thousands of acres of highways in Trinity County. So there is a gigantic strip of highway around my property that's going to be sprayed with herbicides that has a potential impact on my bees, my bee health, as well as the honey that I produce. So I'm not really a fan of that. Also, I believe that the fire that started in Whiskey Town Lake, started on the highway in Shasta County where they spray. Also, I just got back from Oregon, and the fire that was on Shasta Lake as well, got just devastated that area, also is in Shasta County where they spray. So doesn't seem that spraying is really a viable option. Thank you.
Ms. Morris and Board of Supervisors, I'm Mary Lynn Browns. I'm here to speak this morning on what I value. I moved to Trinity County 15 years ago, and we have a small place in San Diego where I constantly filter my water. I never drink anything from the tap. One of my greatest joys in moving to Trinity County was that I could turn on the faucet and have this pure, clean, wonderful tasting water come out of it. I also learned about the SAFE organization and the heroic, life-threatening, almost, efforts that they took to make sure that we didn't have herbicides in our water. I live about a quarter of a mile from Highway 3. I roam through my land, and there's a little creek that is there, and it's just a short distance from the highway. There are tree frogs and wonderful little bugs and critters that eat the mosquitoes and the pests that bother us in Trinity County. We've had a wonderful group of people who've set an example for the state of what other people could do to make sure that one of our rights as a people, our common right to clean water, is honored. And to be an example, to put Trinity County in, as the example in California, as the model for how to keep herbicides and cancer-producing chemicals out of our water, is a wonderful, wonderful record and legacy. And I hope we will continue, and then I hope that you will use your power and your voices and your resolve to keep us safe from carcinogens. Thank you.
My name is Buzz Sheringham. We are a mountain of growers. I've got a 54-acre farm right off of 299. January 1st, 2018, the state agencies all showed up, every one of them. And they laid a lot of requirements on us. Those requirements were to help clean up the county, Fish and Wildlife, Water Board, everyone else. Having said that, and further what my predecessor said, we grow a lot of wheat up there. I couldn't oppose you about two years ago because they go to jail. Pesticides, worse fear. The gully right there, worse fear, pesticides. Jump ahead to last week. The Department of Transportation, I don't think they heard that, they called Fish and Wildlife, and they filed a complaint about me, my farm. Fish and Wildlife came up there, looked around, realized they had a lake and stream that all the original green, they had all papers in mind, and the conclusion was, it wasn't me, it was Caltrans. Old 299, or 299, an old 299 came together. Caltrans created a major issue there, and it's been going on ever since 299's been here. It was all covered, again, by lake and stream that all the original agreement, water repatriation agreement, and every other state document we have. Not only that, it's affecting marijuana, it's affecting the county itself. I've come to love this county the last seven years. It's been real good to me. We've made a lot of contributions here. That whole story about Caltrans, different fact than any here. All you can say is, "Caltrans healed itself." Thank you very much.
I think that one of the things you can do with Caltrans is make sure they follow the label requirements for cleanup and stuff. But my concern is that we have not maintained our fire breaks around our communities. In fact, we have gone to destroy the fire breaks. With the way the things have been going the last few years, we need to make sure that our fire breaks are back in good shape. So that's something you guys need to make sure happens.
My name is Helen Stone, and I've been a resident of Hayfork since September 11th, 2010. I come from a landscape background. I was a certified pesticide applicator in the state of California, and I will tell you that's a difficult test to do, and I'm hoping that any kind of spraying, anywhere, is done by somebody who does this test because it's a very difficult one to do, and it will. So I do have a background in this, and I'm also the SAFE newsletter editor, and I was a little bit skeptical about some of this information that's coming out. But now, I would just like to warn you about unexpected consequences. One of the stories I did track down was that this pesticide called amino cyclopyrachlor, or ACP, was sprayed on Oregon highways. It was registered, it was labeled, it was safe. You know what happened? Right now, they are taking out over 2,000 mature pines in Oregon because this chemical ended up tracking in the soil, killing these pines, and now it can't even be used to grind up and be used for compost because it could track and become, it could get into the food supply. So in other words, this chemical was labeled and applied properly by the Department of Transportation and ended up decimating 2,500 mature pines in Oregon. Unexpected consequences. I'm also a pesticide applicator. I'm 66 years old. I just heard that Pat Sajak had pancreatic cancer, which is so rare. Guess what? I have three of my peers that have died in the last year and a half of pancreatic cancer. What's going on? I'm kind of stopping here. Back in the old days, I used to say Roundup is less lethal than salt, and that is true. There's something called an LDL 50, and under that, Roundup is less lethal than salt. You have to eat more of it to kill you. However, there are unintended consequences. So I ask you, please, to make Caltrans a little bit more aware of these. Thank you.
I'm Pat McCaslin from Hyampom, and I just wanted to let you all know that the pie auction is on March 16th, and we have a free dinner that comes with that, and hope to see you all there. And as far as spraying, I'm just totally opposed to it. I don't think it's an idea that has any sense to it. I want to speak for the animals that can't speak, the butterflies, the deer, the fish, all those people. I want to represent them and say to you, think of them, think of all of the wildlife that's out there that you're going to harm. And please, bring a, have a public meeting, get us together with Caltrans, and let's educate them. Thank you.
I would like to say that Trinity County needs fire protection, and this may or may not be the first step to that, but at least somebody's trying. I'm a watchdog citizen, but I have not seen a whole lot of these roadside trimming and mowing and all of that. So to say that that could happen, that would be wonderful, and it needs to happen because, and I say within the next two months, or maybe even a month, because we're set to have what happened in paradise to that whole darn town, and that was my original hometown. That's why I'm so passionate. And our family has been here for approximately 50 years, and we've watched all of the very strong SAFE folks come up and speak and speak and speak. And they are a strong bunch of folks, so they influence, strongly influence. And so we need to do this within the next month, is to say this whole county, every town, not just Weaverville, Downriver as well, and for many topics, not just fire. But, and I guess this is a good time of Jenny, I've already given this informal survey that was taken last summer at the fair, and since Mr. Brown is, I'm one of his constituents and our household is, and a couple of neighborhoods either side of us, and Downriver, there are lots and lots and lots of people that don't want Representative Jared Huffman, H.R. 6596, to go through. And I understand you wanted to hear from the constituents. Well, I may be the first one, but lots and lots of people don't want that to go through. It's a land grab and a water grab. Thank you. Can I give this to him? Give it to Tina. That's fine. Thank you.
John Knight from Weaverville. I think what this public comment period illustrates to the board is that it's, there is a need to review this policy. There's a lot of legitimate concerns out there about off-site spread from any herbicide used, legitimate concerns. As was said, it is 40 years old, and it has not been seriously reviewed since its implementation. The reasons for this... The reasons for this ordinance policy were conditions back that were quite a bit different than they are now. We know a lot more, the science has advanced considerably since then in terms of research chemicals used. And we're also confronted with different problems now in terms of the fires, the fuels, and invasive species. So I'd like to see us have a data-driven discussion. It is an emotional, hot topic issue, and I understand that, but if we can stick to focused facts, evidence that is pertaining to the project that is proposed, I think we'll, we can all benefit. In 2004, I put a question to SAFE. I asked them, I said, if you have any evidence of an herbicide approved for use in California, applied per its label to control or eradicate an invasive species, an off-site effect, negative off-site effect, whether it's to water, wildlife, or anything, please share it with us so that we can all learn. Radio silence. So I'm going to repeat that question to the people today, and encourage them to bring that information if we proceed with additional discussions on this topic. If you have any evidence of an off-site effect, a deleterious off-site effect, when the herbicide is approved for use in California, applied as per its label, whether it's to control an invasive species, or in the case of this Caltrans proposal, to control vegetation alongside the highway, bring it forward, let's share it, and we can all learn from that. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Stacy Seaver, and I live in Hyam Palm. But I was raised in Hayfork, out west of Hayfork, at my family ranch, which bordered national forest land. I want to say, first of all, that I'm so grateful to the members of SAFE, that they brought the awareness to the local people in the 70s about what was happening in our forests by the spraying of herbicides on clear cuts. The Forest Service had lied to the locals. When we start finding dead deer around in our areas, my sister and I found a dead deer on our property. One day, in the same time, when I went to feed my ducks on my pond, all of my ducks were dead. All three of my sisters ended up, and myself, ended up with serious health problems that I believe are related to that, because we were drinking that water. And at that time, the local people in Hayfork were very ignorant about any of this. We couldn't even conceive the fact that we couldn't drink our water, or that there were these dangerous poisons. And when these people came from outside and started living in our communities, and started bringing this awareness to us, it was mind-boggling, like we couldn't believe it. When the local boys were finding the dead deer, people went to the Forest Service and asked why they were dying, and they gave us this malarkey that that year there was too much tannin in the acorns, and they were poisoning the deer. Well, we all knew that that could not be true. And it wasn't until 10 years later, when I was working for a local rancher who lived on the east side of Hayfork, Bud Jackson, he's the one that told me, and he was not a crazy environmental hippie, you know, he was a rancher who was born and raised there, and he was a tracker, and he knew his neighborhood. And he told me he knew what was killing those deer, that he had seen those helicopters spraying, and that he went up there and found the landing and asked them what they were doing. And they said, oh, this is really safe, it's only killing the brush. But Bud told me, he said, I know that that's what was killing those deer. And that's when it connected the dots for me, that that's what happened to my ducks, and what happened to that deer that my sister and I found. And I'm so grateful that SAFE came, and I'm glad they have some power. And I hope that you will step up to Caltrans and uphold this ordinance that has been standing for so long, and protect us, your people. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I'm Annie Elias, and I live outside of Deloma. And I've been in the healthcare field in this area for 25 years. And recently, we've been seeing increased incidents in mammary cancer and miscarriages. And I don't think we should intentionally spray a known carcinogen to increase that possibility, likelihood, or any other health effects in our community. I drive the road a lot between Weaverville and Willow Creek. I've seen the mowing, I've seen the clearing they do, they do do it, and they do a pretty good job on it. Back around the fires of 2015, PG&E had a program where their customers in Trinity County, because PG&E starts from Deloma to Salona, they were clearing, they were doing all kinds of good clearing around their community neighborhoods. And so that's another option of what could be done to airbrush fire prevention. So I urge you to consider other options that are available, and do not expose us to any other known carcinogens. It's hard enough to figure out why we're having health issues we're having. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Blanco, Douglas City. I'm not here to talk about herbicides, but enjoyed all the public comment. I'm here to talk about lawsuits, because, as I'm sure you know, we had a nice, what would we call it, shot in the arm from a court victory on a position that I think this board has advocated for some time, that pursuant to state law, our ordinances are exempt from CEQA until July 1st, 2019. That's not controversial, although obviously it has become controversial, and until the court said, you know, this is the way it is, state law's controlling on this issue. I don't think that's a surprise to the board, certainly it's incorporated in all our ordinances, it's something we've talked about numerous times. What I am a little concerned about is that, I don't know if it was synchronicity, or maybe a little lack of confidence in this statutory exemption when the lawsuit was filed, that we've seen a shift this year in renewals, that there's an attempt to do categorical exemptions for each renewal. I think while we're exempt from CEQA under a statutory exemption, that doesn't necessarily mean we can't do anything, it means we don't have to do anything until July. I would encourage the county to stay the course that we've been going, not try and change anything CEQA-related until our EIR comes out. It's hard to evaluate a categorical exemption without seeing a master document for the program first. And I think that's the appropriate order we should go in. If we start doing categorical exemptions with how too much procedure, either in the ordinance or published, that anybody can tell, we might see more challenges from either side. There's going to be an applicant for a license that's going to get disgruntled, they could cause problems, there could be opponents to the program. So I think we should leave that alone until the EIR comes out. And in that context, I would translate this ruling from the court to say, Trinity County, you have the right to remain silent on CEQA until July 1st. If you give up this right, everything you say can and will be used against you and us in a court of law. I hope you understand this, right? Thank you.
Andrew Franklin, Junction City. And just one more quick one on herbicides. As I travel 299 into Shasta County and into Humboldt County, where Caltrans does use herbicides, I see no difference in this eight-foot and four-foot in these areas where they plan on spraying. So I would urge the board to ask Caltrans to identify the problem, maybe show you a picture of Trinity County, and how it's different in Shasta County, or how it's different in Humboldt. I really don't see the difference in the way they're maintaining the roads. So in order for them to change their policy, there should be a problem that they've identified, and a problem that they're trying to solve. I just don't see the problem. So please ask them to show you the problem.
Buddy Hazen from Douglas City. During, when we got the ordinance going, at one time, Arnold and I were out there running around trying to brace on this and talk to the boys as they were doing it. And we got to a site, at one time, they were putting dye, when they were spraying in the woods, they put dye in it so they could then aerial see that it had been applied properly. Well, we got up to this camp, it was a mile from my house, and there was, oh, maybe 20 people there. And they all had blue dye on their hands, all the way up to there. On the bathroom doors, there was blue dye. On the cooking utensils, there was blue dye. On their shoes, there was blue dye. On the trucks, there was blue dye. On their faces, around their mouth, was blue dye. Is that correct, Arnold?
Buddy, I need you to look at the board. I need you to face the board.
Oh, yeah. So the fact that, see, the reason we're getting, they're using this stuff, there's a giant industry that promotes the use of these things for money, okay? And some of those people are with us today, okay? And the monstrousness of this statistic about autism, the monstrousness of this statistic about autism is just the tip of the iceberg. This is the most damaging, this is the end of the world these people are bringing us, okay? I don't know if you guys know it, the insects are dying, the bees are dying, the wildlife is dying, right? Our autism rate, they're talking about going to 50%. It used to be 1 in 10,000. We have to stick together, okay? We have to understand the monstrousness of these programs. We have to stick together, and we have to tell them, it's not going to happen here. It's not going to happen here. Nature has a law about dispersion. Do you guys know what that means? You know, if something out there, it disperses, it's going everywhere. Let's stick together, let's tell them no, let's put our foot down, we can stop them. Thank you.
I just want to thank SAFE for all these years of keeping us informed and being a part. 30 years ago, I had a baby on my back, I wanted a stroller, when we marched to get this ordinance passed. And so, not only speaking for the animals, I can't speak for myself, but I like to speak for the children. And there's other ways that we can protect ourselves with fire. Recently, I stopped at a rest stop down on I-5, and there was a big poster, and it said, check your hitch, check the heat on your tire, look underneath. We don't have any of that here, and I think that, you know, we have a lot of coming in and out of Trinity County, we have spaces, places to pull over, because we have to chain up. And I think those areas could be utilized with signage to get people who are from out of this area to pull over before they come into our county and check their rigs. So I think there's a lot of things we can do, and definitely one of them is mowing. They have done a great job in the past, but we know our fuels are getting a lot more, and it's a lot more serious, so maybe we need to expand that distance off the highway. I think there's programs that could be utilized in Trinity County. You know, we have the con camp, and there's, you know, there's other ways that we can come together as a community to try to aid Caltrans. But for sure, you know, you guys have got the message today, we've got to get Caltrans here and talk to them. So thank you very much for your time.
I'm Arnold Quickreach from Douglas City. I think it is important for you to ask Caltrans to appear here, and for you to have an agenda item about it. I would like to add my thanks and praise to Caltrans for the job I perceive they're doing now in the county. Seems like they've been in a little bit higher gear this year to me. I haven't inspected every mile, but what I see is really good. I'd like to say, nice job, keep it up, thank you. But I think they do, we do need to have a discussion, a better discussion, about their movement towards a decision on herbicide use. To me, the process they've been, appear to have been following so far, is either remarkably rude or remarkably clueless in light of our, and their, 40-year policy, and the existence of our ordinance in the county code still, all this time later. And their intention, their announced intention to talk to stakeholders, but their neglect of you as a kind of important stakeholder in this decision-making process. So when the, to me, a future agenda item, which I hope you will make sure includes them, would serve several purposes. One, to make sure they know how you feel, how your constituents feel. Secondly, I think it would be good, perhaps following on John Knight's comment, to, for you to either affirm or clarify the county's longstanding position. Is it still the same as it's always been? It's been pretty consistent for 40 years regarding public agency use of herbicides. If we'd like to affirm it, please reaffirm it. If we need to change it, let's talk about it. As long as we've got our herbicide ordinance on the books, which doesn't forbid use, but it puts more requirements on applicators than the state does. I understand, I think everyone understands, our ordinance does not obligate, does not make binding on Caltrans. Whether or not they like to discuss things before they make an abrupt change of course is another question. Although Caltrans doesn't need to, isn't legally obligated, a question running around the community now is whether county staff ought to be respecting and abiding by the county ordinance. The perception is that some county staff may have been encouraging Caltrans towards this decision, or helping them plan their way towards this decision, or giving their blessing to Caltrans, go do what you want. To me, it seems inappropriate for county staff to provide any support for a program which is inconsistent with the county code, which is your most formal, unambiguous, rigid expression of policy. So if you want to change that policy, please let your people know that you need to change the policy. If the policy's in place, and as long as the codes are in place, please make sure your county staff, in their official capacity, is respecting and abiding by. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Supervisors, Lisa Wright from Lewiston. Hearing all this discussion on herbicides, it brought to question for me the CEQA compliance with this particular project. So the Caltrans project to put herbicides all over Trinity County on the roadways, seems to me it's a project that has the potential for significant impact on our environment. That is the beginning criteria for compliance with CEQA. Has Caltrans done a CEQA analysis? Have they done a full EIR? Have they done a full EIR to show that this is not going to potentially have significant impact on the environment? I haven't heard that or seen that, or I think that would be a good question for them. Second, regarding CEQA, I'd just like to reemphasize some of Mr. Valanco's comments regarding the imposition of CEQA on the renewal process for the cannabis program. So I, I agree that I believe it's premature, especially given the judge's reaffirmation that SB 94 CEQA exemption does prevail. I think it should have been, if it was going to be implemented at renewal time, it should have been publicly vetted and supported by this, this body. There's also, there are some flow charts that have been posted, but no criteria for that categorical exemption process. However, people are being told at the planning department counter that they don't qualify for categorical exemptions because someone has been on their site. I don't feel that that's an appropriate process to be using if you are going to implement these CEQA requirements prematurely and issue notices of exemption for categorical exemption. That there should be a thorough analysis done with criteria provided in advance, and more information posted publicly and published on the website. That also goes for the new 2019 applications. There's no definitions, no reference to code, and I believe that there's some errors in the 2019 application for new applicants as well. So I would ask that this board direct staff to take a closer look at what is being implemented and to bring the recommendations to this board, along with the criteria that's going to be used and the justification for what is potentially premature application of the CEQA requirements, given the judge's ruling in the, in the recent lawsuit. Thank you.
Going once, twice, anyone? Oh, she is.
My name is Franciska Stevens, and I thank you for doing your job. And one of the reasons that I love living here is how clean it is in spite of the world around us. And I strongly urge you to try to keep it that way. We have heard from a lot of people who are here, and I'm sure there's a lot of people who cannot be here, that we in Trinity County like our healthy environment. And the reason why this has been proposed is for financial reasons, and I understand many money talks. So I would also highlight the fact that if this is going to happen, it will cost Trinity County a lot of money in healthcare, in loss of tourism, and there's many other areas how this will affect us all. And I hope that we're all going to be able to have a long, healthy life here. And I strongly, strongly encourage you to do all you can to make this not happen. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, last, last call for public comment? Yeah? Okay. We will bring it back to the board. For whoever's ready before you would like to consent.
I know.
Okay, we'll move forward.
I would like to comment.
Okay.
First of all-
We're gonna hear more from Rick during his department.
Right. First of all, I'd just like to thank each and every one of you that came. As a citizen of Trinity County, it is your right, but I will also tell you it's your obligation, and more importantly, it's a privilege. It is wonderful to look out in this room, whether I agree with you or disagree, to have the citizens of our community actually have input. And I would recommend that the board does bring back whatever ordinance or resolution that we've done in the past, so we could vote on it. I'd ask that it be agendized, and I, I believe it'd be a wonderful thing to bring Caltrans here and have a communication with our members of our citizens, with the board. And I think it would be productive in the transparency and going forward as a united community, so I request that.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. And we'll have more information from Rick's body when he gets first department head. These items include routine non-controversial matters and will be acted upon the board by one rule call motion. Members of the board, staffer, public may request an item. We pull and concern separately. I would encourage the public, if you'd like to hear more information on this item, that you might want to stick around for some department head updates if it's of interest to you. There will be a little more discussion on the public comment we just had, so I'm not sure if it, you'd like to leave. Okay. Hold that thought, Kay.
I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, board members, any item you'd like to pull? Uh, Bobby, I'm sorry. Yes, item 1.6, 1.11, and 1.13. Thank you. Supervisor Grooms?
Yes, 1.7.
Okay. That's it?
That's it for me.
All right. Oh, of course, I should, I had that circled. Supervisor Brown?
No.
Nothing? Um, I just want to double check. I'm gonna pull 1.13. Did I hear, okay.
Oh, you did that to me?
Oh, you did? Yes. Okay, sorry. That's right. I, I kept hearing 1.3, version 113, so, okay. So, I think we're gonna end up starting with 1.6.
We haven't asked staffer or public.
I'm sorry. Staffer, public, sorry, Kay.
Staffers.
I think we have one item that Rick wanted to pull, but he's not.
Yeah.
Kay?
And from the members of the public that know the meeting isn't one item, I would also like to pull 1.2.
1.2, okay. I'm new to this pulling thing, but one of the board members already pulled what I wanted, so.
That's fine.
Then we're good.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving on to 1.2, which is, I'm sorry.
I'll move, I'll move to Dusty.
So much got pulled, I figured. Now, second. All right, please pull the board.
Supervisor Toward?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 1.2, approval letter to the California Fishing Game Advisory Commission from the Trinity County Fishing Game Advisory Commission, supporting the brown trout management plan being proposed by the Hoopa Tribe and other fisheries managers. This came through us through Clerk of the Board for the members of the Fishing Game Commission. Yeah, Kay, your question, comment?
I have a question because it, the letter was the only thing in the backup, and it mentioned a study. And so, I requested that because it wasn't on, on the backup material, and I received it, thank you. I was wondering, because the way you speak in the letter and the way it's agendized, I don't see the rest of what you're talking about, who the managers are, the Hoopa Tribe, what their actual input was, so I was wondering if there was more documentation on that. I read through this, the study, the study's actually a thesis for a project for, and it, it's a study, it's a study you do to finish your schooling, so I'm not knocking the study itself. The scope of the study was very narrow. It, it was the effect of brown trout on salmon, and I don't think that, but it doesn't take into effect the changes made by the Bureau of Reclamation with the water flows, it doesn't change what river restoration is done with the side channels that two years later become fish traps and are killing the fish, the fry. The recommendation is basically to try to flood the, I'm assuming, it's a, it's a ichthyologist major, not an English major. I'm assuming they, they want the, they're encouraging the hatchery managers to do a bulk release of fish instead of doing it steadily over time. And, and I'm just saying this because you guys are writing the letter in support of something. I'm thinking it's the study, but maybe something else, and I'd like to get that information or just have you let me know if there is more. But the recommendations are to remove brown trout. And brown trout have been here, they're introduced more than 100 years ago. Brown trout aren't, fish have been here over 100 years, aren't the ones that are reducing salmon population. And this study just take that into account. And I would like the board to add a little bit of language. If you are interested in salmon restoration, that goes towards the, what Bureau of Reclamation and river restoration is actually done to the river. They filled up the spawn, they filled up the holes where the fish rest in the cool water. They've destroyed spawning gravel, and anyone that goes down the river can see that. The, this recommends that they do, let anglers keep their brown trout, and I would say the Board of Supervisors could go a little bit further with that, and maybe you'd have to work with fishing game, I suppose, but increase the take of brown trout. You know, increase the limit, change the size requirement. Also, it talks about periodic electrofishing of targeted brown trout. That's not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go that way. If you could have anglers remove the fish, that would be a lot more productive, and we would have people up here fishing. And then maybe local people would be more interested in fishing. But I would stay away from electrofishing. I wouldn't want to promote a study that gives a college student, you know, creates their own position kind of deal. And I would like to know if you guys know if there's more, the Hoopa Tribe input and the other input that you guys mentioned in your letter.
Well, this is a letter, as you pointed out, from the Fishing Game Commission local, and I don't think he is here.
Yeah, and John's not, Supervisor Finley's not here, so.
What we can, do you want to add anything else to this? We know some, but if they were here, they could answer your question a little bit better.
If, if you just knew if there was more to it before you, you gave your blessings.
We were given oral presentation by, or I was, and Supervisor Morris was, I can't speak for whatever oral on the issue, and there was more than what was in the study there, but we don't have any written backup, to my knowledge, on, on that. But I do think it would be appropriate, since this did come out of John's committee, that we put this off, continue this so John can answer those questions with, with the Fishing Game Commission.
Thank you. It's, it's probably not a big deal, it's just so, there's nothing there.
I will say that my encouragement to them was to, to make these angler results, where anglers and tourists are ones doing the work and not, not just wholesaling, killing fish. There was the ideas such as bounties, which is done in certain areas, that would encourage fishing for those, that species. I think there was pretty clear evidence that the brown trout do do some damage, significant damage into the fry, even though I do agree with you, that is not the only answer, there's a lot of other issues going on. But at this point, we need to kind of take some more aggressive steps to keep the salmon from being listed.
Yes, and the other thing, if you don't mind, is fishing game, because fishing now requires the angler to have GPS and a lawyer with him, and that a lot of people don't want to fish anymore because of that. And I don't know what you could do to make that, you know, fishing with a license is almost a crime now. So if that's also another problem, the harassment of people that are fishing, and the complications of it, so, and that would be nice for the Fishing Game Commission to look into. Thank you.
So, do I have a motion to table this?
Yeah, I would table that until.
Okay, I have one more comment on this item.
John Varpol, who we reviewed. I've looked at the documents, including the study, and just full disclosure, the study that is seeking to sort of manage the population was funded by the UROC tribe. There's a second study, more recent study, done by two fishery biologists from Weaville that contradicts much of what was found in that initial study. And what I'm seeking to understand is what the brown trout management plan really is. Because as a fisherman, one of the secrets of the brown trout fishery on the Trinity River is that it's world-class. There are huge brown trout that are fish of the lifetime for many people. And what I've heard is those are the fish they want to get rid of, the adult fish, that consume, there's no question they consume a lot of salmon fry. I mean, I have pictures of friends who have caught brown trout with smolts hanging out of it, so they are voracious. The issue is whether or not they're a major factor in the return of salmon, and how that's impacted. And the more recent study questions the results of the earlier study about the impact that the brown trout have on the salmon population. So what I would like to see, and what I've tried to find, is what the proposed management plan is, and I don't know where it comes from.
And I apologize, that should have been included, I don't, did they send it to you?
The, right now, it's proposed, so. But I think of the scientific basis, what they want to do is manage the brown trout population, and I don't know how they want to do it. I agree angling is the best way, and good luck with that, because brown trout are notoriously hard to catch. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, supervisor Brown, would you like to add anything before you?
Well, we received the informal-ish presentation on it, and my basic understanding is that they're claiming that brown trout are consuming about 25% of the hatchery fry. And so essentially, the hatchery program is feeding the invasive fish that are causing the problem that the hatchery program's trying to fix. That was kind of the short version of it. So they said that, you know, they know that the brown trout's not going to go away, it's not going to be like a full zero population at any point. So it was just reduction in numbers as to if it was smaller or larger brown trout, I don't recall that in the details, but they were going to look at pulling some from the wiers if they get caught in the wiers. The electro was mentioned, the angler incentive was mentioned, I believe those were the three proposed potential amendments. That's about all I have to say.
Supervisor Chen, what?
Yeah, the only thing that I would add to that is during the oral presentation by Kyle DeHulio, Supervisor Brown and I suggested that the, the weir catches would be where they would do the electrification and be more of a, a larger amount caught, and that we suggested that if there was any way possible, that that food would be donated back to the local food banks.
Okay, so, any other public comments on this issue before I bring it back? Okay, board members, what's your pleasure? Do we want to table this?
I'm going to table this until the time that Supervisor Finley's here, so I would assume that would be the next meeting.
And I wouldn't mind having Kyle, so he can answer the technical questions, should they come up. So I have a motion to table, taking a second.
Close again.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so, item 1.2 will be tabled to the next meeting. Item 1.1, 1.6. Authorize the Clerk of the Board to send notification on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to all Trinity County special districts regarding requests for consolidation of districts via year elections with statewide general elections. No fiscal impact to the county potential election, cost savings for special districts choosing to consolidate.
Okay, we have staff here, but Supervisor Chairman, will you pull this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I thank you for my indulgence in allowing me to pull this item. I don't see staff here, but what I was hoping was to congratulate the staff on having provided a well-done, executed, professional job in this item. So I hope that gets back to them, that the board appreciates. We know that they've had difficulties in the past, and we just really appreciate them taking the time to present to the board a well-thorough document.
Any other comments on the issue, members of the public?
Having heard what Supervisor Chairman just said, I'd like to say, as someone who works in a special district, they were great. They were professional, they provided us information about it. So just so you know what happened on the flip side, they followed up, they helped make sure we got it all done and got it in, and just wanted to give them kudos as well.
Anyone else? All right. With that, do I have a motion? I assume I do.
I would be pleased to make the motion to accept item 1.6 as presented.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So moved. Okay, item 1.7. find no objections in the issuance of a daily alcoholic beverage license to the Rury Club of Weaverville to serve alcoholic beverages at their Dream Makers Gala and auction to be held at Veterans Memorial Hall in Weaverville, California on April 6, 2019. No fiscal impact. I think that's your cue, Supervisor Row.
Yes, so I, this, I would like to recuse from this fabulous event. Everybody should attend.
Members of the public? Comments, questions? All right, you're all going to be there, I know. All right, so we will bring it back, and I will entertain a motion. So moved.
Second. Is that a motion?
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So moved, 1.7. approve amendment number two to the agreement with SHN Consulting Engineers and Geologists Inc. extending the term of June 30, 2019, and increasing the maximum cost of $150,000 to provide general support services to the Planning Department on an on-call basis. No impact to the general fund, $150,000, for the total $250,000 from the Planning Cannabis Division. I think we have a few questions. I know you have information too, Rick.
Yeah, I did want to make a correction on staff report. I reported in there that there's no impact to the general fund. And later, I realized that what I thought was billed one way was billed actually another. Currently, as of December, we've had $51,000 billed towards it, and we've had substantial work done within the last three months. So we were thinking ahead to where we were going to be a month or two from now, and we didn't want to run over the contract amount. But out of the $51,000, less than 10%, which was $4,481, had been billed to planning activities. I'd like to remind the board that use permits, even though some of them are for cannabis, they do have some overlap in planning activities. So we have to bill to plan accordingly, and that is planning that funded through the general fund. So we remain within budget, but it was a slight impact. And so I kind of expect it to continue to be in the 10% to 20% range, but the comment that there was no general fund impact was erroneous, and so I wanted to make that correction.
Okay. I'll have some more questions, but I know Supervisor Chairman has a question.
Yeah, so, thank you, Rick, but I'm a little confused. There's no impact to the general fund, and yet there is. Could you just give us the figures and not a percentage?
Well, if we were to have 20%, that could be an impact of $30,000 over the life of that contract. But again, as I've mentioned, it's within the contractual services that were originally budgeted beforehand. I have a set range of what I expect to be contractual services for various different things. I don't always specifically know exactly what it's going to be when we get to budget time. We have to do some forecasting and anticipation. And we had done that this year, so there was capacity within the budget. I don't have to do a budget adjustment to make that available, it's just that we have that impact.
So if you were to change the fiscal impact, what would you say now? If you were to rewrite this?
Yeah, I would change fiscal impact to say potentially up to $30,000 of general fund impact, but also, at the same time, keep in mind that the contract does, if I recall correctly, it does go to the end of the year, we were making that request, and in that, that goes into the next budget year, so it's also can be also addressed, and would have to be addressed in future budgetary requests. But in last year's budget, we did make a request for consulting time, and we just didn't have the contracts in place. There's a, asking for the money in the budget is much different than actually having the contract to do the work.
That concludes for now. Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions?
No.
So, Rick, I know we first brought them in last year to help handle the CUP process for cannabis license holders, and then later, extra planning work, as you pointed out. Are they going to, I know you're short-staffed even just on the planning side, and we have a lot of non-cannabis work needed to get done, do you feel this will?
Well, we've gone through several recruitments and processes to bring people on, and we've had very little success.
So can they, are they still going to pick up that staff?
That's what I need them for, is exactly, is to pick up some of that work to assist us. Some is partial assistance in projects, others they take on the task and review the work, and release it once we build ready.
All right, with, oh, Supervisor Row.
So when you talk about coming from the general fund, there's also fees enacted by the clients that are, you know, let's look at non-cannabis fees. So those fees go into the general fund?
Correct.
And then, and then, so the net loss into the general fund, do you have an estimate on that?
It's usually about 30% to 40% because there is an augmentation of development-type activities by the board, or that's been historical practice, that encourages development within the community. We don't always have full cost recovery.
All right, thank you, Rick.
I have a kind of follow-up. On those cannabis license holders who need a CUP, their CUP permit fee is going to go for this type of work versus the fees we collect on our license, is that correct?
Correct. This is, this is, this work is when, yeah, when it's this, the work that's under licenses is a lot of processing, administrative time that goes into multiple different things. This is more specifically to prepare environmental documents, or to prepare the documents required to take a use permit to plan an environmental document, or processing, and eventual consideration for a planning commission possibly forward.
I think there was some confusion that just the general fees for licenses were going to this, you said, the CUP process, but it's really individual applicant-driven with that fee associated.
Yeah, it's much more towards the, I'll call them the bigger things, the challenging projects that you can't use an administrative staff to get through.
Right. Okay, I'll, any other questions from the board before? Okay, I will open it up for the public on this item. 1.11.
Hi there, my name's Gail, I'm here, I'm a resident of District 4. I've participated heavily in the proposal by Mines for the cannabis distribution facility in Douglas City. My first comment of error was in October of 2017, when I met Mr. Mines by accident in the recorder's office. And the mapping program used by the county to identify landowners to be notified is inaccurate. That inaccuracy has continued even to the last Board of Supervisors meeting, when Mr. Tippett continued to say that the properties do not directly adjoin a residential property. And there is a rural residential property on the APN Nibbler ending in 11 borders it. And so that is of concern. Because of the number of errors in the SHN contract work prompted me to come here today. The county had done an initial study and proposed negative declaration that was presented last spring, 2018. It was so error-ridden that Mr. Tippett said he was going to hire an unbiased consultant to complete the work. That work was completed and sent to the Planning Commission. I believe it was not fully vetted by the Planning Department, and it isn't, the process is too loosely defined in the contract, who is responsible to vet, who specifically is. It even implies that the public, such as myself, should be involved in the vetting prior to release to the commissioners. I believe it's arguable, at least, and I argued that at the last Board of Supervisors I believe that SHN presented a quality of work that you will continue to expect. It is my professional experience that when working with a writer who has delivered a lower-end product, that asking them to deliver a higher-end product may be beyond their scope and ability. Mark Cheney said at the Planning Commission meeting, where you all were not present, that it had so many errors because he was too busy. He had so many reports on his plate, that that's why the Hayfork School was reported as being within a couple of miles of the Douglas City property. Oops, you know, so that's, it's, I am so ashamed for all of us that we have to be here asking for a quality piece of work. So I have written in a memo that any contract amendment or newly-written contracts by the County of Trinity include a process to fully vet an initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration before it is released to our all-volunteer Planning Commission. Because you returned the Mines' proposal to the Planning Commission, that means they're going to get to hear this project for the third time. Ouch, for them, and all of the rest of the public and the contractors. I also ask you to include in the contract amendments or penalties for quality failures.
And you can pass that to Tina, so she can.
I already gave it to her.
Got it, okay.
Can I ask Rick if he wants to?
I was going to do that after.
Can we?
I'm Veronica Kelly Alves, Douglas City. The original contract started out at $25,000, up to $25,000. Keeps it in a non-informal bidding area, and now we're going up to $250,000. And I kind of want to piggyback a lot of what Gail said, is it's sort of become a paper exercise? They've got their template, copy and paste, they're pulling information from websites, or, you know, copy and paste maybe from information that comes over from the Planning Department. So really, we have an administrative copy and paste going on. There were eight pages of errors, some very simple, and I get it, we all have a lot to do in our jobs, I'm one of them. But if we're going to look at the contracts, they need to be able to provide all the backup information, sitting at your desk, pulling things, putting them on paper, and then presenting them as having fully-vetted an environmental issue is not, not a professional, in my opinion, or it's not the way it should be done if we're going to ask for extra help so that we can really do the job, because it's too much, and they work hard. I've been in there, we know. But if you're going to say we need help because we want to do a better job, then we should do a better job. It should be more than just copy and paste. And if you have a community plan that says site-specific soil sampling should be done, and it doesn't get done, but we've hired extra help, and whether it's cannabis or non-cannabis, if you're just hiring someone to copy and paste, I might have some extra time. But I mean, you need to look at that quality, and I love the fact that we should have, what Gail said, all the backup to it, with, you know, not just, oh, I pulled, and it does say, I pulled it from this website. And we have, we have community plans that say, you're not allowed to do that, but yet it continues. So if you're going to take a look at adding more money to SHN, let's take a look at the scope, not just the scope of work, but what they're deliverables are supposed to be, and make sure we're getting them. Because if you look at that, they're supposed to be giving us cumulative assessments. They specifically said at the January 17, Planning Department, that they didn't do any for this, the Mines project. And the scope of work says that they're supposed to be providing cumulative assessments. My new favorite buzzword, and I learned it at one of your meetings that you set up for the, for the public, with the countywide EIR. It was a big buzzword, it's required, and they're not doing it. Let's, if they're going to extend it, got to do their work. Have we, have we reviewed how well they've done their work? And that's kind of my comment, that I think there's going to be more cost, because what I've found is they come in, say it's going to be this, oh, but I forgot. Let's not forget, let's take a look. That's my comment. Thank you so much, and thank you for your work.
Okay. We obviously have a few questions, Rick. Oh, sorry, it's you?
Came from the side. Lisa Wright-Lewisdon. I do want to comment, I believe that the Planning Department, particularly in the cannabis division, because that's where my company primarily works, is severely understaffed, and the existing staff is very undertrained. So I do support augmenting that with contracts, because I understand that it's difficult to find the expertise needed in this area. But I would like to, so I do support a contract. I would like to, however, comment on some statements that were part of the staff report regarding SHN's appropriateness for this project, based on their, I believe, I now have in front of me, lack of conflict of interest because they're not working with private parties within Trinity County. I think that's rather prejudicial to other firms, and I'm not saying that my company, Flora, wants to bid on this. What I'm saying is I think that sets a standard where there's a potential for exclusion of local firms who have high levels of expertise in this area from providing other kind of documents or similar documents. So, for example, you know, I have a staff that includes biologists, scientists, wildlife specialists, engineer. Those people would take exception to someone stating that they have a conflict of interest because they're contracted with a private party. They're very objective, and our goal is to make sure that, you know, that the cannabis projects meet all of the regulatory requirements. There's not prejudice because we're contracted with a cannabis farmer, and we look at it differently than we would otherwise. So I do take exception with that. I would like some feedback from the board certainly, on why that position was taken by staff, and perhaps walking that back, so that doesn't exclude in the future the participation by local consulting firms. Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors and staff. John Brower from Johnson City. I want to echo what the previous speakers have talked about the last few minutes, it's an important matter. It's an important matter. We're going on four years now of standing up our local departments to transition our economy into cannabis permitting and licensing. We've had four years now to staff up the Planning Department, get some professionals in there, and do this important work. Here on the staff report, it says, no impact to general fund, $150,000 for a total of $250,000 from the Planning Cannabis Division. I, I don't know if anybody's impressed with the last few staff reports out of SHN. They're loaded with errors. I don't know if anybody from the county is proofreading their work before public hearings. I don't know who's supervising this contract. But if we're gonna pull 250, a quarter million dollars out of the Cannabis Division and spend it out of county for professional services, we should expect a high level of work. That quarter million dollars should be spent here in county, paying county residents to do this professional work. Every dollar, every single dollar that lands in our local economy gets a chance to circulate around for a couple days or a couple weeks before it gets driven to Reading and spent at Costco, and then it's gone forever. So I would encourage, Rick, as a Director, to ask the Supervisors for real money to pay professionals to staff your department. And I think you have widespread support from the community. I know you have widespread support from the applicants that are paying a lot of money for this work, and it sure seems like that money would be better spent locally. Thank you.
I'm Chairman of the Board, Tom Black, out of Douglas City. On this contract, I, I've seen everything SHN has done for the last year and a half, I guess, that they've been in our employ. In most cases, I've seen the applications before they were presented, in some form or another, before they were presented to SHN. You know, I, I find their work credible and defensible. That's not maybe a glowing compliment, but it is, you know, it, it works, I think it meets a level of sufficiency. What concerns me is the time that seems to still be required. I know part of why we saw the need to hire consultants, because we weren't being able to process these things in-house in a sufficiently expeditious manner. I can think of one CUP that's been pending for well over a year now, for, you know, one acre on ag land. I'd like to see, and I don't want to say, oh, it's SHN's fault, they're slum, or it's Planning's fault, they're slum, or, you know, maybe it's the applicant. But I would like to see, and maybe we can incorporate into the reporting at some point during board meetings, but how many CUPs are in play and where they're at? Like, does SHN have them? Are they still in planning, being prepared to send to SHN? Or are we still waiting on things for the applicant? Because I think in some instances, we get confusing, where an applicant thinks, what's taking SHN so long? And SHN hasn't even gotten yet, because it's not, the package isn't complete yet. So I would like to see some, some clarity in the contract, if we expand with them. I do think we need to have a consultant. If it means kind of circumventing, if, if Planning is itself unable to keep up even with, with feeding stuff to SHN, maybe we kind of circumvent that and really outsource that aspect directly to SHN. But anyway, I'm sure Rick has some thoughts and ideas on that. But if we're gonna be spending this money, I sure would like to see us getting quicker results. And if it means we need more staff at SHN, and maybe that costs more money, if it gets us more results, maybe that's the way we need to go as well. But in general, I think they are doing work that helps the process in general. Thanks.
All right.
Good morning. I'm John Burrow from Weaver Valley. And looking through one of the exhibits, there was a list of some of the things that SHN is going to be assisting with. You know, the one that caught my attention says it will, quote, "provide project coordination and sequo facilitation of the county's commercial cannabis cultivation ordinance in our overview." My understanding is, we already have a contractor, Ascent, that's doing that. And I know they've worked on the Humboldt EIR, and I think they've done a good job in a more complicated environment. So the question I have is, what does SHN plan to provide that Ascent won't be providing?
Any more, any other questions?
Okay. I am gonna address the staffing issue, I know we tackled it last week, or, yeah, I guess it was last week. It's not a matter of funding for staffing. As you heard from Director Tippett, they made a few attempts to find, it's about talent acquisition, if you wanted to talk sports. It's finding the right folks, the right knowledge and experience to get in there and help with a lot of our planning overall issues, cannabis or otherwise. So this is where SHN is trying to fill in some gap. Now, we're hearing some concerns on some levels, so we'll have Director Tippett discuss that. But I do want to make it clear, it's not a matter of not having the funding, it's just a matter of recruitment. So with that, I, I know Supervisor Gross has a question.
Well, I wanted Rick to have the chance to comment, or have him comment on, what I hear more is the quality of work is the concern. And is there, is that something that you feel the quality of work has not been, well, I think the term was, is at least defensible? Or, or is that something that you're unhappy with the quality of work and are working with them to bring the quality up?
I've been happy with the quality, but there's always areas for improvement. And it, this, one of the things when you hire a consultant, it's an iterative process, where they go out and they do the work, and then you have folks that review it internal, which is staff. That's why I talk a lot about what, you go and you hire a consultant, doesn't necessarily always relieve you of all the responsibility of that. You still have about 30% of the time that would take if you'd done it all yourself, because you have to review the work and you have to check quality. Now, last, or one of the CUPs that we soon went through did have some errors, and then I asked them to go back and correct them through a supplemental to the original document, you might recall that in the literature that was given to you, if there was a supplement to that. It was most unfortunate, we didn't catch it at staff level. But again, a lot of these projects are very rushed with everything else that's going on, so sometimes the quality assurance hasn't been at the levels that I would like to see if we were to be staffed at a much higher level. But as far as the work that's been done, yes, I, I have done a lot of things with SHN, and I've found them to provide quality work.
Is there anything, any information about the Ascent and the...
Yes, I can, I can address that. SHN is preparing documents that are site-specific for specific projects, like Mines', CUP was mentioned, and then there's also a bunch of other Mines'. But specifically, they're brought on to address issues related to conditional use permits that are pulled for specific projects that deal with anything from a building being more than 5,000 square feet for commercial property, to things associated with cannabis, such as manufacturing, distribution, and nurseries and things like that. The environmental document that Ascent's working on is, they're working on the environmental document that gives secret clearance for the cannabis cultivation ordinance. And that is the broad overall program that, that drives that. So they're, they're looking at the big picture, where SHN is looking at project-specific picture. And that's why there's no, there's no overlap between the two. As a matter of fact, when we went out, we had kicked SHN out of that loop, so that they weren't biased towards particular things. One of the things about bringing these consultants on board and not having to do this work is for transparency purposes and to ensure that you don't get biased. For instance, probably the best example I can give is our county surveyor, lives here in the county and surveys, but she has no active projects within the county during the terms of her employment as county surveyor, because we don't want her to check her own work. So it's kind of the same with, with, when an applicant comes in with a project for a use permit, they come to the county because the county is an unbiased, supposedly mutual project or partner, in that, in that they process it. So we expect, the consultants be processing it the same as the applicant, as it would be if it was processed by staff.
Cool, thank you for that explanation.
Margaret and Richard, I know we're working on building capacity and planning and taking plenty of building, and Rick's got a full plate. I wouldn't be heartbroken if you had a little bit more. I know you all do have some time spent in planning, but just to help oversee some things, we know packages that go to the Planning Commissioners are just a little, sometimes off, and there's a lot of work going through. We can't wait until a new planning director's put in there. We just have to have some extra eyes on some things, if possible, for Commissioners and the public, as these items, whatever they are, come before them.
Supervisor Chad, I see you're light.
Thank you, Madam Chad. I'm really grateful for this opportunity that this has come before the Board, because I believe it's symptomatic of many of the contracts that Trinity County ends up participating in. And I want to read a paragraph and a line on the backup, if, if you would like to join me, it's on page 239 of the 315. "County staff feels in the interest of time, it would be more effective to amend the existing agreement rather than selecting new consultant via independent request for proposals." Those are known as RFPs, that's a process. "It is important to note that the existing agreement was not done via an RFP process, but rather a sole source, due to the critical pending timelines and overbearing workflows requiring immediate assistance as well as the lack of local qualified firms. Staff felt it was important during this first contract that the firm be a local for a quicker turnaround and knowledge of the unique challenges of Trinity County, what we have. The Second Amendment includes a task deadline of December 31, 2019, where no other task will be given to the consultant beyond that point. It has a termination date of June 30, 2020, allowing time to complete the task assigned prior to December 31, 2019." Now the next line. "Between now and December 31, 2019, county staff will advise a request for a proposal allowing the consultants the opportunity to bid on a scope of work requested by the county." And here, here lies the catch-22, if you would. "We had to hurry up and hire someone a while back without the request for proposal. You get what you pay for. I truly believe that. Without an open and a competitive process, we are not exactly posed to pick the best and the brightest. And we have had time between the last proposal and today to request the proposals that now we're saying that we will do in the future." We have to, as a county, look at our contracts, and not just pick what's in front of us, but what is the best for our county. And the cheapest, or the most easiest, is not always the best. So I would like to see us put that proposal out now and not wait until a later date. And I, it saddens me to hear that we have paid the amount of money that we have paid, and that when the gentleman representing SHN came before this board, he said that they had made the corrections. It was the community that made the corrections. And we're not paying the community to work for the county. So I think we, we should embrace this opportunity to relook at the way that we have done business with prior contracts. Thank you, Madam Chad.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to make a comment. One of the things that we have now with Susie Coltrum, who's actually, part of her time is to give the DOT planning building to do that, we've actually, we've actually initiated the process. I mean, we're in the process of developing the RFP for the next round of soliciting for consultants. So it's a process, and it takes multiple months to get all the way through it. And I want to make sure that the Board understands that the selection of the consultants are always based on the one that can most do the job, that's, and the California law doesn't allow us to base it on a cost, so we can't base our solicitations on cost when we look, what we look at, who's going to give us the best product. SHN is known by many for work outside of this, and also by the CAO, and we know the work that they do, we know their, they, we knew their availability, and that was the things that focused in, or factored into when we first selected them, that they were readily available already, they had the capacity to do it, and they do good work. I mean, I have many projects that I've worked on, and I've been very happy with the quality. So I wasn't, I, I don't feel we selected for what was available. I think we still did choose a very qualified and competent firm. But I do want to assure you that, that there is, as much for me, a desire to have an open competitive process, to have the right consultants on board, it's just, we have to find the time to do it. And I'm starting to get those resources that allow us to get the people and help me put the RFP out to get those people on board.
However many hours Susie is getting from the county is not going to be enough. We need to increase her hours.
So Rick, if you, I recall last spring that you did, stated you had experience with SHN, and you highly recommended them. So where, where do you think is the breakdown of some of the work coming back isn't as great?
Well, I think...
Are they getting it too late?
I think the issue, the last one, was there was some oversight on some simple things that they shouldn't have missed. And when I say, I want to clarify that in some simple, meaning that they had, they said like a school was too, was right next door where it was actually quite far away. And those were, those were things that we should have probably caught at staff, staff level. Again, we're challenged in our review of these, a lot of times it's speed reading. And we've had that discussion since then, and I've asked, asked the consultant to exercise care to make sure that doesn't happen again. So we did have a, we did have a candid discussion about it later. But, you know, it's, it's, a lot of these things, the more time we have to bet, the less you see these problems. Also, there was a, a request for an update.
Correct.
On that, so far out of that, that, that's included seven use permits, what they've done so far. And of the seven, we've had one that... And of the seven, we've had one that's gone all the way through the process and been approved. We have one that has come all the way to the board and still has pending some work. We have two other use permits that are pending or that have gone through the clearinghouse. They have a completed secret document. And they're in the, my understanding is they're in the noticing process. They've been noticed for public carrying and then becoming a planning commission person. And there's three remaining. And as I've mentioned at several meetings, the speed C or the process of this, how fast it goes, is strictly dependent on the applicant. The applicant many times will pick up, will get his application in. And one of the first things is to evaluate these potential studies that might need to be required and request those studies to be done. And once we request the studies, we're, I'll use a Navy term, dead in the water until such time that we receive them back in our office. We can't process that application until that's received. So I have three right now that the applicants are well aware of what we need, but we cannot move those forward or bats them until such time that they do bring those documents in. Could be something such as a biological assessment or an archaeological resource evaluation or it could be a number of things, you know, a noise study. So it's a number of things, but again, it's based on the initial review of the application.
All right. Want to move to something else? Okay.
I'll move to approve 1.11 as written. I will add comment if it gets a second.
I have a motion and a second. Oh, you need a second.
A second. On further discussion, I just hope that as you state that we move forward as fast as possible to get the RFP out and get that process going. I appreciate the fact that you've got that process, but that's something that I would put priority on.
And I would just reiterate, you know, another, I know you're really shorthanded overall in those two departments. Some other type of, I don't know if we need to bring in a retiree from planning to help get some of this process internally because I know internally we're very shorthanded to get stuff to SHN. But we do need to see, you know, some type of increase of progress on some of this stuff if it's possible.
Actually, on May, we've been working on finding a job to contact Frank Lynch to have some review process and some of this not, doesn't want to be in the active process.
Sure.
But we have new staff on board.
Right.
And what we want him to do is read and recommend and then have staff process it. So we are, we have been looking at that, but contracts are difficult. So that's what we've been looking through, but we're right on the verge of being done.
Okay. Because I know you talked about that a while ago. And so Margaret and Richard, whatever you can do to help on that. Because I know Frank will be a good-
And they've been very involved with it.
Okay.
The audience didn't hear name was Frank Lynch.
A former senior planner who's retired, so. Okay. So any further discussion on this item by board members? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Are you opposing or with us?
I oppose.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'm moving on to item 1.13. Adopt a resolution in support of a statewide commission on recycling remark it's no physical impact. I think both Supervisor Chadwick and myself want to pull this one. So I'm sure your phone's been ringing like all of ours on this recycle matter throughout. It's not just us, it's throughout the world as your report has mentioned. We appreciate the resolution and working with CSAC on this. There is no quick fix to any of this.
Really not?
Unfortunately. So I assume you're in with your solid waste association types, trying to find various solutions locally. I mean, our local provider was not able to do that.
I attend several different groups that are trying to look for solutions on it. And this request from the governor was useful because we definitely need help with it, the whole system. And us being so remote, we end up with more problems even than the counties that have more, their access is better. Because even if I come up with mine, is that I still have increased costs for getting things out of this county and we don't have anything currently within the county?
At this point, do you anticipate our costs going up with more stuff going to our landfill? I think some of the calls I've received are folks worried about increased fees on our end to them.
In order to recycle at this point, it costs more than throwing it away.
I think they are going to just increase their landfill and their dump trips to us.
I'm trying to look for a system somehow to update it so that we can equalize it somehow because we still, of course, have our state requirements for diversion. So we can't just say, no, it costs too much. We are just going to throw it away because then, of course, we'll be out of compliance with all of the diversion requirements.
Right.
So we're looking at some way to try and balance it out and still looking.
As the whole world is. Are you familiar with any outlets in Reading that the members of the public can take there? Is anyone in Reading taking non-CRV?
The only one that I am aware of at the moment is from them having to do their mandatory commercial recycling and waste management collects at a fee. I think I was quoted $185 a ton where I normally pay $46 a ton for trash. That's the only place I know of that we can get rid of that. And I haven't heard of anything on a residential level at this point, but I keep asking.
Sure. Supervisor Chadwick, anything?
I just want to thank you because I know that this was in our public comments not that long ago. And you always remain, you always listen to the public, and I appreciate that you're responding in such a positive way. And I look forward to the solutions that you bring. So thank you, Diane.
You're welcome. All right. Any other questions from the board, members of the public?
Are we talking about non-CRV plastic or glass or all of it?
They're not taking at least the imports of plastic. Our main outlet would be China.
Because I gave you that one company. I don't know if you ever talked to them about it, but there's another company and I don't remember the name of it right now, but I will find it, that is using plastic for making fuels. So, I mean, that could be a source of sales.
Okay. Any other questions? All in return of motion. So moved. Seconds?
Second.
Thank you. Tina.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. With that, the SNC agenda is complete. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Chairman?
Yep.
We have a bunch of people waiting for Rick to, if it's Department Head, can we do that and then take a break?
Oh, we can do that, sure. This will only take a few minutes. Where is Rick?
Rick, if you're outside, come to the White Courtesy phone.
Clean up an aisle.
I'll get the A Commissar down.
He's not there. He's been hiding. So Rick, of course, you know, there's been a lot of comment today and all week on this Caltrans new development. I'm not sure they wanted to meet with you on a staff level, I understand. I'm not sure quite what has prompted them to change course of action on their end. We can speculate. I've not been told personally, publicly. So I assume there's more discussion on this coming up. I would like, I don't, do they have a plan or are they still trying to develop with input from the public?
I think they're trying to develop right now.
Okay. That's my thought.
Yeah, they, let me go through, we had a staff level meeting a couple, a week and a half ago. Initially, we hoped to have it at the library, but it always has been intended to be staffed and multi-jurisdictional meeting. But I want to make sure that everybody understands it's Caltrans meeting, not a county DOT meeting. They were going to set, about the only extent was asked of me was to find a place for us to meet. And so we're going, like I said, we're going to start here. This was, they had put out, it was going to be here before I told them whether it was booked or not, it was booked, so we ended up having it D O T. And, you know, one of the things also is that I only have so much room there and we had a full room, even meeting at that spot. They did have a discussion about some of the history behind it and that, you know, they've had this desire to always try on what was in place. It did point out that the MOU that was in place a while back has expired, but they're still continuing following it.
Right.
But they also pointed out that it really was a new issue because California law allows for them to apply herbicides at their discretion on state facilities. So I would say it was kind of more of a, as a courtesy thing than as a, as we want to see if we can do it. We're letting you know we're going to do it.
So-
Sorry.
Go ahead.
They're requesting to apply four feet or their, what their proposal right now is to apply four feet except in the areas of waterways and not applying those areas. I did, I requested them to meet with the weed committee and that they return in some shape or form to the community and have the chance for the community to have a venue to make public comment.
So I understand that you have members of SAFE there trying to add some input to the discussion. I know you've done that in the past for your own projects.
Yeah. It's, it, Caltrans, to their credit, was trying to bring the players to the table to have that discussion. I mean, pitching games there, US Forest Service, SAFE, county, A Commissioner was there, a few other folks.
So I would like to see, since there's, it sounds like there's some new folks involved at Caltrans who may not know the complete history of Trinity County and this issue. They have been respecting our ordinance even with the new state legislation. It's not that old. If I recall correctly, it was passed in the late eighties maybe, where the state has final say on this type of topic, but they've been working with this since. So I'm not sure really the great change of course on their part. Yeah, let me just Supervisor Chadwick a minute. I would like to, after the weeds committee, or they can combine it, I would like to have them do a full-fledged workshop at night so they can interact with the public, interact with members of SAFE who are familiar with this issue and have some really more dialogue than you can have here. And we'll see what happens there. I mean, they have to show a plan, what they're doing in just four feet off the highway. I think we would want to know what they're going to use, what its impacts they're going to use, why they're going to use it versus these change of course and why they're doing that. Was Dave Moore at that meeting?
No. It was mostly Caltrans environmental and those folks. And I, as you know, we've had a discussion about using applications at the airport. And it was the process that was developed in conjunction with the weed committee. The A Commissioner make application with some, with specific best management practices we call B E Bs for runoffs or to catch runoff or anything. And that SAFE was also very much aware of it. And I had suggested that through the weed committee, we had developed that model and that they follow the same thing. And so, you know, there's, they, at the end of the day, this coordination that you speak of goes through the A Commissioner. And that would be, you know, I leave it with the experts, expert to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
So in this workshop, they should also be explaining their whole roadside, you know, what they've been doing and what they continue to do for on the fire side. I think this is what's driving them is the fire issue. So I would certainly want your department involved. We have a new A Commissioner who isn't that familiar with our history on this issue. So as you can see, we're in a full room. It's important to the public on this issue to really understand what they plan to do.
Yeah. And I want to make sure I express that DOT has no intentions of using on the roadside.
Right.
One of the things that I talked about at the meeting is, is that we only have a couple hundred cars on our roads. They have thousands of cars per day on their roads. So, you know, first of all, violence is different. But not only that, our citizens understand the importance of not dragging the chain. The problem that we have the people that are dragging the chains are mostly folks that are out of area, coming in the area and not realizing what they're doing. So I don't have that need like what Caltrans does, but I want to assure the public that it's not DOT following right behind on the coattails of Caltrans to request weed abatement on the chem roads.
And I would hope they have other tools in their kit to address this issue. Education is, everything is being turned upside down under the subject of fire. So I'd hope that they have other tools besides this one to look at roadside issues. Supervisor Chadwick?
Yes. Thank you. First of all, I know the day of the meeting, you were really sick because we finally connected and I couldn't understand a thing you were saying. So I'm glad to see you better, Rick. That's a good thing. There were four specific things. You said that our MOU has expired. I would also like to know how much public notice was given. And you mentioned that they were doing this to let us know, but then you made a statement that they were requesting. So I would like clarification on top of that. And the last one is what is their timeframe? When do they expect to spray, if allowed?
Okay. First of all, it was, it's staff level meeting.
Right.
So when it's, when it's supposed to be staffed and just coordination within the agencies, there's no notice that goes out to the public for those. It just happened that we invited other groups that we don't typically invite into this meeting for input because it's, you know, we try to round these things as much as we can.
So how much notice did they have?
They had about, I think it was about a week, I notice. I don't remember exactly. It was enough time that I could set up facility and have meeting, but I think it was about a week that they, they called before the snowstorm. I remember that. And, but again, it was also, it was never intended to be- And, but again, it was also, it was never intended to be a public meeting. I mean, we have staff, we have staff level meetings day in and day out to coordinate and discuss different items.
So, it was staff, but it had specific guests?
Yes.
Okay. I got you.
It was tailored to, you know, Bureau of Land Management, US Forest Service, to the main players.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying that. And the MOU, when was that expired?
I don't know necessarily when it was expired. I don't have that date.
It's been a couple years, I, what you said, I don't know.
I, I haven't had a chance to go look at it. I would probably defer to the A Commissioner on that. And then...
Let us, let us, let us, knowing versus request.
Oh.
It's two different things.
Well, even when they were talking, they were saying, you know, we understand you have the memorandum, but then they, they cited a specific state code that says, "We can do this."
Right.
And so, I think what they're saying is, is we have the law behind us, but we don't wanna come run you over in doing it. We wanna try to coordinate with you and, and see if we can make some mitigations. It's essentially, we're gonna do it, but we're gonna, we'd like to try to do it with your input. And that, that was the sense I got from, from Caltrans was that they did wanna hear from the community, but at the end of the day, they need to put that to within their collection of things that they're able to do on state highway that meeting. And then timeline?
Yes.
This year.
So, we don't know if it's summer or spring or...
It, probably late spring. They wanna do it sooner than later. So, that's why I would see them, I'm, I asked them to try to set up a special meeting with the weed committee and then also some sort of action, and that was a public action where you could take public input somewhere along here. But I, I thought it was also, I always said it's important that, you know, just like we had that day, people want to speak about that, that we offered that opportunity.
So, I would, you know, you're gonna have to sit on them to get a date going quickly for this workshop. I understand you want them to see the weeds committee first? Is that...
Yeah, I'd ask them, but I, I don't control...
Of course.
Minor ask.
Right.
Yeah, request. And I request strongly, but...
So, I think it's important for them to really unveil their plan overall, not just on the herbicide issue, but their, their plan if they're trying to chase some major things.
Yeah, and I know that based on the, you know, the input that they'd had from our committee and hopefully input that they get from the weed committee, that they will have that very thorough plan and that they will be that coordination with our A Commissioner to any type of mitigations or monitoring measures that they might take as they move forward with this.
Okay. Sure, that concludes my questions, but my request to you would be that the workshops that we have in the evening, that it would be posted so that any of the supervisors that would wanna participate, we could go first.
Yeah.
I'll make sure it's well advertised.
Great, thank you. Okay. Did you, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
A comment first on us. If, if it's a general meeting, are you asking to participate or to listen?
To listen.
So, I'll refer to council...
It's just a workshop.
Can, cannot supervisors just go to listen to a meeting without being opposed to?
Without being opposed to what?
Without being opposed to?
If it's a public meeting, they can.
Okay. Thank you. So, Rick, heard a lot of stuff today. There's a lot of, I'm guessing, supposition on what they're doing. Do they have a plan that says, I mean, I had one, I think Mr. Glass said they're looking at pre-emergents and other people say they're looking at, at contact herbicides. So, I'm, I'm confused even what they're doing.
Right.
Do we have a plan? I mean, did they say, "We're gonna spread X"?
No. They, they said, "We are," they kind of explained in general where they're heading. They did have some specificities, such as four feet, not spraying along the river, a parallel river, and I think I remember one time they mentioned within 25 feet of a culvert crossing. But this was exploratory meeting, initial discussion, and I think that when we get to, towards the workshop, that they will have much, much more detailed plans of what they, they propose.
Well, I guess that would be my point. They, they need to come with an actual plan for one that might con people or might upset people even more, but we, we need to know exactly what they're doing so we can kind of grasp...
And I know, you know, they did mention that they also do these applications multiple other counties. Remember, Caltrans is sister to nine counties. So, I, I'm expecting that they will follow after some of the other actions that they take in other places.
Doesn't make it all that complicated.
I think, I think it's very important that they have this meeting with the public. I think the public has a lot more persuasion than me or, and if, if our board members here, and so, I think that would be essential in this process for them to hear from the public.
Well, and I, I, as you know, I just, I remind you, everything that I ask at Caltrans is asked.
Right.
No, I understand. I'm, I'm not, but you are, we are conveying through you to them.
I convey very strongly.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, I'm expecting them at this workshop to have a decent foundation of a plan and that they will take public comment, ideas to make it better, but it's a great place for them to interact with the public on the subject and develop, further develop their plan.
Okay. And I'd be curious about the, the, how much of the plan do they have to present formally? Is there a sequel process that are required to do?
Good point.
I, I, when that comment was brought up, I was thinking about that, and I think that this falls under maintenance and would not, you know, the sequel process would be more about the construction of the facility...
Yeah.
Than the maintenance of the facility. So, that would've been something that would've been addressed on the public.
Thanks.
All right. You'll keep us updated on the date. I'm gonna say it's soon, before the end of March.
Yeah.
I would assume that.
I, I, end of March or beginning of April, I, it's again, we gotta fit, I want them to try to fit.
Right, right, right. Okay. With that, we will come back in five minutes after a quick break.
All right. Right, okay. Sorry, you're right.
All right, welcome back, for those remaining, well, lasting the whole five minutes, Amerifarmers.
Our short meeting.
Our short meeting? I swear I was gonna have the board out by eleven.
Why?
Rick, did you have anything else to add in your department head?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Last night, or, as you know, we had some rainstorms, snowstorms this year, and we had held up pretty good through most of the year, it's just been a lot of, lot of plowing, awful lot of plowing, I might add. But this last storm that we had a week ago did do some damage to our county road system. Probably the biggest two spots were Sky Ranch Road and Junction City. They had a lot of washout. And then we had a slip-out on High and Palm Road. It wasn't a, it wasn't landslide onto the road, it was the underneath foundation of the road slid away and has created a situation where the road is stable for the moment and passable, but is right on the brink of becoming impassable. And the problem is, is that when that happens, there's no, being it's, as I mentioned, a lot of plowing, all the alternative routes are covered under seven to 10 feet of snow with trees, fallen trees all over the place. So, we're talking about quite a period of trying to get some alternative method of reaching them available. So, we did, as the C O, Supervisor Finley and some leady from HHS and Ed Presley from OAS, went and met with the community yesterday to talk about the, the issues that we have up there and what the potential recourse might be that if, if this gets worse, or what we're gonna do just to fix it. One of the things that we have out there is that this is, anytime you have a slide, it's like the mud, it, the material becomes mud and muck, and so you kinda gotta get it out of there and get it dried out somewhere. But you gotta dig all the way down the foundation and bring it back up and it's essential. So, I have been coordinating with Central Federal Lands because they've done some work on High and Palm Road, and we also had asked them to help us with the 2017 storms. So, we asked them to also fold this in there and start looking at and see what type of things we could do to do that. And I'm also working, or I've got some coordination in with Forest Service. I asked the region, Southwestern Region Engineering, to help me coordinate with Six Rivers and Shasta T to determine what the best route would be to reopen if, if the slide does happen. So, I wanted to assure you that we're actively pursuing and we're also in coordination and contact with members of the community out there. We sent out a red alert call about the meeting last night. There's probably over 50 people, I'd say, at the meeting, so it was well attended.
Right. Any questions on that?
My only question would be, is there any level of concern that it's gonna just like slip out while someone's driving over it or have a...
Well, here's, here's, you know, I was asked that question quite a bit yesterday, and, and there's no easy answer on this. I could go the safer route and have people trapped in there for five days. And, and so, that's the dilemma that we face, is that, that it's, it's not as stable as I would like it to be, but it's exhibiting characteristics of other slides that we've had in the county, which you had a slip-out, but the site stabilizes and then you can, it stabilizes and you don't have any more problems for the rest of the year. If we get another day of six inches rain, yeah, I'd be really worried about it. What I'm also looking for is we put K rail around the thing, and if I get a dip in the K rail, those are the things I'm worried about. If I get longitudinal cracking in the road, things I worry about. But also, we did look at risk and we suggested to the school district that the parents bring the kids up to St. John's Road and not drive the bus over it. So, we are taking some actions, but there's a point where we have to take some risks to keep providing that access to the community. That means that the community, they have to be proactive in making sure that, that they go and take a look before they go drive over it to see that things look okay. I am putting retro reflective markers on the K rail so that people can see it at night. I have asked for a light cart to be placed out there and that we will be having staff go by and look at it once in the morning, once at night to make sure it stays stabilized. But I, it's not a perfect situation where I could say, "I've done, have no problem, I'm not worried about, keep doing what you're doing." I am worried about it, but at the same time, it's, again, we can't isolate the neighborhood when, when things appear to be stable.
And then I did hear that the road got cloud between Bird Ranch and High and Palm.
No.
Not as of a few days ago?
No. No, there's, there's about 10 feet of snow up there going on here.
I do have something for both you and...
Yeah, and, and staff, I wanna make sure everybody knows, county does not pile that road, that is Forest Service road.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
Speaking of roads, I, this is for you Supervisor Brown, I meant to send both of you a work in email, but since we're talking roads and storms, I was approached by some residents out of Junction City, off of Canyon Creek. You know, there's the road that is a mess that you guys have, was damaged by the last storm. They're concerned that no one has checked under there, that the creek has not washed away more on the foundation of that road. So, I don't know if you've had staff check that, please?
They're, they're out there, we have, the road crew staff is out there periodically. Usually it's about every other day that they get out there, but I'll make sure engineers staff also.
Yeah, I think that's, since it's still damaged from the last, and this was a pretty big storm that went through. Thank you. Any other questions? For us, thank you. Okay. Anything else, Rick? Did you have more?
No.
No, okay. C O, A Commissioner coming in.
Still on department reports?
You made it, step forward.
Well, I hear it's about time to come to one of these ones and say hello. So, I'm your new A Commissioner, see their ways and measures briefly, as Mark knows, keep me short or I'll get long-winded and you guys...
Keep it short.
We took the, I bought new standards for testing scales in grand units since the industry is in grams. I took our, all of the map, the standards and the prover down. Unfortunately, DMS is short-stacked too. It's gonna be at least a month before those get out, so without the standards, of course, we can't check. What else? Getting trained up on doing inspections, and if all the growers that I've seen so far, if that's reflective of what we have in Trinity County, I'm, it's gonna be a good thing. I realize I'm probably seeing the cream of the crop right now, but I, I do want to report that from what I've seen, it's taken a lot of worry off my head of what am I getting into? And other than that, any questions?
No.
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Chadwick.
To Joe?
Yes.
You forgot to introduce your name.
Oh, I'm Joe Moryo, retired Commissioner from Modoc County who was recruited and happily took the Trinity County position, more than they're proud to be. Yes, it's working its magic on me too. I'm about to start believing in Sasquatch, but that's, I'm gonna limit it to that. That's as far as I'm going with it.
Well, we'll see about that. The second thing is, would you like to debut your 420, your participation in that?
Well, we're doing it together, right? Yes.
I believe Supervisor Brown's gonna speak to it later, but would you like to speak to your part?
Yes, we wanted to have a grower meeting before, it's actually during the spring run-up. 420 was available, the, the fairgrounds was available. The A Commissioner and the fairgrounds are always tied at the hip, so we, I, we wanted to have a meeting. I looked at the calendar, I go, "How about this day?" We went down and checked it out, everything was okay, and then Bobby booked on the same day. But it's, we're gonna do it the same day, and the, the fairground needs events to keep going. I was the presiding commissioner of the Modoc County Fair, which was the smallest fair that ended, and it was a real, just tragic part of my career to have to be the seated commissioner of a county fair that ended. They have a long, long history, and I don't wanna see that happen in Trinity. But they're suffering the same things that was going on in Modoc in terms of, you know, they can't lose money forever, that you will lose your fair. And so, whatever we can do to have events there, I would encourage.
Okay.
So, you're all welcome to come to 420 and make fun of me. I'll, I'm gonna spend half a morning about pesticides and the regulations and, you know, that stuff, because it's my job and I've got to do it. There's a lot of education that needs to be done in this community in that regard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning, Shelley Nelson, H R Director. I just wanted to provide you an update on the vacant veteran service officer position. I'm happy to say we have interviews next week. Shasta County is continuing to support us and serve Trinity veterans during this transition period, and I will continue to keep you apprised.
Great, thanks, Shelley. Any others?
Have we introduced Susie?
Yeah, not officially.
This is our grants coordinator, she's called, she came on, what, almost two months ago now?
Three.
Three months ago. The board approved the position in late 18 and recruited, and we're very excited that she was willing to come on and work with her in Shasta County, and her reputation does precede her, she does a wonderful job. As she's gonna demonstrate here, she's just gonna give the board an overview of what she's been working on and some of the grants that are in hopper.
Morning, thank you for having me. Again, Susie, and I'll say my last name for everybody, it's Cockums.
What did I say?
Don't, no, don't worry, my own family doesn't get it right. As Richard said, I've been on board for about three months, and once the community found out I was the grants coordinator, let me tell you, the floodgates opened, and I think Supervisor Chadwick said I need to be working full-time. That has happened, however, I think my full-time is more like 600 hours a week. That has happened, however, I think my full-time is more like six hundred hours a week. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of what I've been working on, maybe some stuff that's coming in the future. I'm a Chadwick Cathy, so I will try to keep it short. Currently, working with several law enforcement entities in the county. Tim Saxon is heading up a justice assistance grant, $220,000 a year for three years, we're working on that, that is due April 25th. This afternoon, we have three, or excuse me, two conference calls with law enforcement entities across the country that are very successful in their major crimes unit, and they're going to give us some Ps and Qs and answer some questions for us, so I look forward to that this afternoon. Working with Behavioral Health, Human Response Network, and probation on a Prop 47 grant, that's a million dollars over the three-year period. That grant is due March 18th, we're ironing out some final details this afternoon, and look forward to submitting that. That Part 47 grant is going to be a mental health diversion grant, so a big focus on our mental health population that are involved with the justice system. Worked with Veronica from the Weaverville Deadlift City Parks and Recs Department on a cultural community and natural resources concept proposal. It's a precursor to the grant application. It was a $2.2 million application, we haven't heard yet, we've invited back to participate in the full application, but that's to do a lot of upgrade work to the pool area at Loudoun Park. $50,000 McConnell Foundation Grant, we have multiple ideas in the Hopper, hopefully going to iron that out in the next couple of days, that's due in about 10 days. That one's more about community infrastructure, so we've got to figure out what our top priority is and submit for that application. Due on August 5th, we're going to submit as a county to statewide park development and community revitalization program grants. There's, the focus of this grant is really about water conservation, going green, doing some work at public parks, or developing a new public park in severely economically disadvantaged areas. So we have a couple of ideas, vetted one yesterday with the Hayford Parks and Rec Board, and Veronica just came back from vacation, so I'll be meeting with her on that same opportunity. The max per application is $8.5 million, so we have some massive opportunity. County Medical Services Program, we worked on a health systems development grant, myself and the behavior, or excuse me, Public Health Department submitted that earlier this week. It's $300,000 over three years. Community Development Block Grant, maybe that's a term you guys haven't heard in quite a few years. CDBG money is all about public benefit and serving low to moderate income neighborhoods. There's three buckets of funding that we could apply for. I'm trying to really set the county up to be prepared to submit an application when it comes, the notice of funding availability comes out early next year, but we're sitting on some funds that we need to expand and some projects that we need to get in the Hopper. That's currently my goal right now, been working with a community infrastructure planning team where we have members from, I swear, all over the county. Every noth and cranny have been working with me, and we've got a lot of infrastructure projects that are worthy, and if I had $10 million, I swear it wouldn't be enough. So look forward to some interesting stuff coming forward about infrastructure. I'm going to skip a couple of these because they'll come up later. No Place Like Home, I don't know if you guys have heard that term before. It's some funding that came around from SB two and SB three passed last year. The county has worked on this for the last two years. I was working with Noel from Behavioral Health before he retired, and we will be submitting a competitive application for $500,000 in August, and then we'll submit a follow-up application no later than November to build about a $3.8 to $4 million affordable housing development, up to about 30 units. There's some targeted populations that are for this particular development. We are leveraging about $172,000 in partnership healthcare money that we applied for last year, and we were just awarded this week $200,000 from more recent housing funding through Housing Emergency Aid Program, through our continuum of care. So we'll be leveraging four different sources of funding to build this affordable housing. So that's a, that's about a five-year project, five-year-long project, so lots more information on that. Okay? Let's see. Procurement, I'm working, I think Rick Tippett said a few minutes ago that I'm working on a RFP/RFQ on a cannabis consultant to help us get some of that stuff in movement a little bit faster, as well as, one I'll follow-up behind that, is an RFP for engineering work that needs to be done, kind of shore up some loose ends hanging out there. In addition to the $200,000 that I just mentioned to support the No Place Like Home project that we've already been funded, we were funded a project for kind of a precursor to the No Place Like Home project, developing a housing plan that talks about the housing needs in the county, and that was funded also $31,500. So since December 5th, well, I brought in $231,500 towards community efforts.
Good job.
So, and there's a whole bunch more I left out here that I've been working on, but it's less interesting.
And you're just beginning.
I'm just starting.
You're just starting, so thank you. We, this is way overdue, this need, and having your role filled, so thank you so much. There's a lot of needs in the county, and you're learning.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other department headed? No? All right. CAO?
I yielded my time to Susie.
Okay. Fair enough. County Council?
The only thing I was going to report is the outcome of the litigation, but Mr. Blanco stole my thunder earlier, so I will, I will, I'll cede my time to him on that matter, but it was all in the favor of the county.
Right. All right. Supervisor Chadwick?
Yes, as you know, I just got back late last night from Washington, the National Association of Counties. Madam Chair has allowed me to postpone my reporting out on that. There's three primary takeaways from that. I'm not sure exactly what order I'll be reporting it out in Pilt, which is the payment in lieu of taxes, which is tied in with the SRS Secure Rural Schools, is being fortified by the Western States and has been front and center. If you go to the NACO website, you will see that there was a press conference, we had many senators come, and so I'd like to just do, in the future, a little update on that, as well as affordable housing and the transportation and infrastructure. So those are three different groups that I'll be reporting out, but I haven't really unpacked my brain yet, and looking forward to being able to share the little bit I can try to explain. Thank you.
Welcome back. Supervisor Brooks?
The week before, I was in Washington DC, Bobby, so we were really tag-teaming the powers that be. I will have more on the federal lands legislation of that, but I want to thank T-Pod, I took a ride with them and with their lobbyists to discuss some water issues, help them on some power right-of-way issues, and I'll get to the federal lands when we get there. I met with Lamaltha, the Bureau, and the Office of Congressman Huffman.
Supervisor Brown?
Let's see, after the last board meeting, I went and attended the second series of the new Supervisors Institute at CSSEC in Sacramento. Learned about some California finance history, all the old, trying to figure out where all the money is and where it went and why it is the way it is. So that was a little overwhelming, but informative. I was able to meet with the leading environmental scientist for the California Natural Resources Department, Loretta Moreno, and got to talk with her about some of the fire concerns that, you know, everybody's aware of in the county, and hear, hear straight from her mouth kind of what their approach is, and she works, I guess, right under the direction of CAL FIRE, I believe John Wade, maybe, is his name? And we talked about the CAL FIRE's report that they returned to the governor about his, he had a 45-day report that he wanted CAL FIRE to give to look at alternative ways of dealing with the fire issues. And so they developed a plan in that 45 days that outlines 35 specific projects around the state. Unfortunately, I believe Trinity County did not get any attention to those projects, or we're not, we're not one of the projects, and maybe it's looked at in a good way because they identified it as what is the most required, the most threatening, and they had a whole rating system, and so I guess maybe it's good we didn't fall under their rating system, or maybe we just didn't fall under their radar. I don't know. That report is out, and it's interesting to read about. They talk about other alternatives that CAL FIRE can do to help mitigate some of the fire issues. Nothing, nothing too out of what's already been discussed, utilizing convict crews. But it is an interesting report to look at, and they talk about maybe laxing up on certain processes or licensing processes that hold back homeowners from doing clearings quickly. So hopefully we'll see some sort of positive fallback from the report. And I was able to meet with Senator McGuire's staff and Assemblyman Wood's staff, and then also the director of the BSUC, Katie Howard, and got to talk with her about the jail project and the importance of it, and any alternative ideas or options we have for, moving forward. That was pretty much it. I think I was at a county branding class last Friday, and really got to look at other counties' branding processes, kind of the difference between county emblem and a county logo, the pros and cons, the values of that process, so some interesting things.
I should have had some other county travel. Didn't work out that way, and I owe all of you some lunch for having this meeting today because Supervisor Chadwick and myself are both going to be out of town, so on Tuesday. So my apologies, and I will take your lunch orders in the near future. I will add that I do plan to, it might be a special board meeting to look at the various efforts going on, on some fuel reduction work pre-fire season, the variety of groups in Trinity County, including CAL FIRE, RCD, some of the fire departments with their new money they received, and Watershed Center, so it's about some scheduling issues, so I will keep you posted on that. Other than that, that is it. Cannabis ordinance, commercial cannabis amendments. Supervisor Brooks?
I don't believe we have any reportable.
Nope. We are kind of in a holding pattern. I, we did incorporate some of the state legislation discussions into that committee, so I will say that Senator McGuire with SB 67 is trying to remedy some of the temporary provisional license delays at the state level that hasn't, that's in the works, so he is aware of some of the, the state, too, is having their delays, and he's trying to provide some legislation that will open that door a little bit more. All right, Federal Land Legislation Committee. Yeah?
Okay, so I went back and was scheduled to have a meeting with Congressman Huffman. Unfortunately, I picked the week that Mr. Cohen was having testimony at the House, and so the whole House was all at Twitter, and was unable to meet with the Congressman, but he did, did meet with his staff who's in charge of the Wilderness Bill, and from my standpoint, it was a very disappointing meeting. Their stance is that they, quote unquote, will make no substantial changes to the Wilderness Act, and that they would continue to take input, but there's no changes coming. I presented a lot of different cases, explained that what we'd hoped to do is get input from the county. They felt that they had enough input to move forward without further input. I'm trying to be nice as possible about what I'm saying here. So, in fact, some of the information that they, that she had was incorrect about supporting the county, that she had explained to me that the collaborative had already seen this and that had voted on it, which I explained to her was not correct. So anyway, the, you know, what, what, they feel they have a good bill moving forward for the county, and we've already, you know, voted previously that we wanted to see some changes. So my original plan and with Supervisor Brown was, we wanted to meet in the community and take input, and then send that input and possible changes to make this a better bill to the Congressman, but the fact that they don't seem to be interested in changing the bill, I would like to change my recommendation that, since we do have a little bit of time, and the reason we didn't send it to the collaborative previously was we were under a time pressure, that I'd like to see it sent to the collaborative, and under the format that they don't want to see changes, they just want to, we would like to see a thumbs up or thumbs down from the collaborative, which would give a wider spectrum than what the supervisors see that has, you know, a good spectrum of stakeholders in the county that could have their input, but again, there's no changes, it would just be, are you for this bill or against this bill? And then bring that back, whatever their recommendation is, back to the board where we would either stand by what we previously voted on or change, change what we, our recommendation. So that's my request to the board. I have talked this over with Jeremy, and I'll let him have any input that he.
Yeah, I mean, I support what Keith has to say. If I was going to share my feelings on the thing, I'd say the, they're going to do whatever they want to do, that's kind of, and that's what I hear a lot from the community, even those who are against it, that they're going to do what they want, no matter what, because that's what they've done historically. And so I, I'm curious if there's any value in trying to work with them to get something to our benefit out of it, if they're going to go ahead and take the land or take the water, as it's been described to me. Well, maybe we can get something out of it that would be beneficial to us instead of getting nothing out of it and feeling like we were robbed. So that's my optimistic approach, is to smile and support their, you know, what they're trying to do as far as they've identified it as a positive value to the community, so to give them the benefit of the doubt so we can continue the discussion instead of the full, you know, we're not going to talk to you. So Keith and I make a nice balanced approach, I think.
So, Federal Lands ad hoc team, we, I will mention this to our facilitator to have it come before our collaborative at the next meeting, which would be April, if I hear your wishes correctly.
Yeah, I, that's what I would like to see. I would, to be in a point of some sort of, point of leverage to improve the bill, I think the committee and the Congressman need to understand, you know, some of our feelings and viewpoints, and try to work with us here to get a bill that benefits- and viewpoints, and try to work with us here to get a bill that benefits Trinity County, benefits the ecology and the land. And so I think at this point, having the collaborative look at it is our best alternative to show what the county, the broad spectrum of the county feels, and maybe the collaborative comes back and says, this is the greatest thing since sliced bread, and I'll reevaluate my beliefs.
Okay. Any comments for the board?
No.
Okay. All right, Retail Cannabis Ordinance.
So we had a meeting with the planning department and looked at some of the stuff the state's requiring for their retail needs. And we discussed broadly some of the different types of retail needs that would be applied to Trinity County. And we reserved the fairgrounds to have a meeting to discuss retail issues on April 20th. And we'll be figuring out the exact timing of that event and the sequence with Ag Commissioner, I think will be in the morning, and then more of the cannabis-related stuff will be in the afternoon. But I thought it was a good first positive step in acquiring opinion from the area about all the aspects of retail.
All right. Do you have a date on that?
April 20th.
Oh, of course.
It wasn't necessarily an intentional thing, they just happened to talk about.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, it is a weekend, so.
Oh, it is? Oh, it's the day before Easter. I think it is.
Yep.
All right. I think that's it for ad hoc committee reports. County Matters, we're almost done. These items include non-routine or controversial matters that are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the full staff of public may request an item be heard out of order. Human Resources Item 3.1, take following action, the Behavioral Health Services Department, effective March 8, 2019. Number one, approve the job description, salary range, and add to the department position listing a compliance officer at the range M221. Number two, modify the allocation list in the Behavioral Health Department Division to read 0.8 compliance officer. Three, modify the allocation list in Behavioral Health Department Alcohol and Other Drugs Division to read 0.2 compliance officer. And four, delete the following flexible staff allocations of Quality Assurance Coordinator 1 and 2, and Agency Coordinator/Manager from Behavioral Health Department, Behavioral Health Division. Approximate costs and salary and benefits per month for a compliance officer at A staff is $7,416.
Thanks. I'm happy to have the one and only county matters item at your special board meeting today. Our new Director of Behavioral Health, Connie Smith, was, has been evaluating her new department. She's discovered there is a vacant allocation, as you've listed, of these three flexibly-staffed positions, which are actually not required in the California Behavioral Health Programs. What is required is an actual compliance officer. And this officer will manage the formal compliance program to detect and prevent fraud, waste, and abuse. She is asking to delete the classifications that you listed that are flexibly-staffed and replace them with this new job description and classification of a compliance officer in order to bring her department into compliance with actual federal regulations. There's actually no cost or budget increase because of the request. I have vetted this with the union, they're in support of this classification, and there's another paragraph that discusses in detail what they do. I can repeat that if you'd like, or?
I think we're all good now. Thank you. Questions from the board? For Shelley?
I just want to say, I appreciate that we're getting rid of three non-use things and implementing something that we should have, so kudos to her, to you Connie. Thank you.
Members of the public, any comment on this item? Okay, see you now, I'll bring it back to the board.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you for waiting. All for you. All right, moving on to clo, oh, we have subsequent. All right, this item came at the last minute this morning, and it's to move and discuss or take action to ratify a local emergency proclamation regarding the February atmospheric storm incident, and find that the need to take immediate action came to the intention of the board, subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is that without confirmation from the board on, by March 8, 2019, the proclamation will expire, and the conditions are likely to continue beyond March 8, 2019. Is this you, Rick?
Yeah, there, Cal, yes, had called us this morning, actually asked us to revise on English from late February to March. And so I'd just like to make that recommendation. But our road damage is not that significant, it's not significant to the level of 2017, where we had, you know, about $17 million damage. This one is somewhere between one and two million, but we haven't had a chance to get a price on it yet. But it is damaged in order to be eligible for CDAA contribution and to go into the federal emergency relief program for roads, federal highway roads, we need to make this preparation.
All right. How many do we have on the books? Two? Two, we have, okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm sorry, there's, there's two pages that are identical, and we got this late, and I'm just wondering if that was an oops, or is there something different on the two pages?
I don't, I only got one.
Did you have those? I got those, but I got a duplicate, and I just want to make sure it's a duplicate.
Is it the law?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, then it's a duplicate.
Okay, thank you. And there's no changes, it's just, we just have two copies.
That would be in the error if there's two copies.
Okay, thank you.
All right, questions, Rick? No? Members of the public? No? Bring it back. So moved?
Second?
All right. Oh. Is this you, Tina?
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chauvin?
Aye.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Rick. All right, moving into closed session, Government Code Section, this is Item 4.1, Government Code Section 54954.5, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation number of cases, one, Trinity Action Association versus County of Trinity, Trinity County Superior Court, 19CV001. Item 4.2, Government Code Section 54954.5, public employee evaluation, county administrative officer and director of transportation. Item 4.3, Government Code Section 54956.8, conference with real property negotiators, APN number 020520-17, 020510-42, 020510-43, 020510-07. Agency negotiators, Rick Tippett, Margaret Long, negotiating parties, Stephen Harris, under negotiation, price, terms, and payment. Welcome, Kate.
Question from the public. On 4.3, I, okay, so you can negotiate for real property in closed session, but I don't understand why, I mean, are you buying the whole parcels? Why are you buying it? I mean, why can't those things be disclosed to the people? Is Stephen Harris the property owner? I went and looked at these, I'm assuming the numbers are right, this is in Hettenshaw, I think it's called Valley. I'm just wondering why that can't be disclosed? And if you're negotiating, when you're done negotiating, why don't, why doesn't it come to the public what the price was before you okay it?
Whatever we can discuss, Rick, do you want to take it?
Sure. This is part of a process of the Uniform Act.
We have to be very careful because we can't reveal more than.
Yeah. And the Uniform Act essentially says that, that I have, in order for me to negotiate, I have to have something that is established by the board based on, on information I present to you, which is also allowed to be presented in closed session so that we maintain our negotiating power. I execute the, I sign the agreement pending ratification of the board, but at such time that we have completed our negotiations and we have set the price, that information does come back to the board in open session, and they approve it, and then the cell's finalized and goes to the, to the tackle, to be completed. So it is an upfront process, it's just, we don't want to show our hand until we have a chance to negotiate.
Eventually, it will come back to the board in open session.
Can it be reported out clearly?
They will have to go back to the negotiator, until it's final, it won't come back into, in front of the board. Okay. Thanks.
I have a question from, so the purpose of the transaction would be done at a later date?
The purpose of the transaction?
Right. I mean, there has to be a reason that we would be in negotiation.
Yes, so, so if, if negotiations were fruitful and it was something that staff was going to recommend action on, that would come back to the board with a full description of what it is, and budgetary components of that as well. Now it'd be an opportunity for the public to ask questions as well.
Okay. But not before we can't say it's for building a gymnasium for Hettenshaw Valley or something?
There, we'll have, first, we have to see the information from staff, I'm not even aware of what scope of the project is, to be able to answer that. There are certain situations where if it would not interfere with our ability to properly negotiate, there's a chance there's certain elements we could, but again, at this point, I don't have any information that I would feel comfortable, really.
Okay. Okay. Other than that, the meeting is.
Going to closed?
Going to closed session.
Or do you have, did you have another comment?
Oh, I'm like, yeah.
This is on closed session items.
That's fine.
Okay.
The, the matter of human resources, I just want to add my two cents, I come in, Director of CAO, Koons's job, and I really think he's done, brought a lot to the table since he started. He really jumped into a mess when he started here with the county, but he's done a very good job of trying to clean things up, and he's helped attract some other talent to county staff, it's been awesome, and I hope that continues. And then on the matter of the litigation with the Trinity Action Association, I want to say thank you to everyone here for vigorously defending this emerging county program, and I hope that continues. And I think bringing in more specialized legal counsel is helpful. The new Suzy Cockums, the new grant writer, mentioned writing a grant seeking cannabis consultant for the county, not sure what that is for. I don't know if it's to help make more informed ordinance planning decisions, I don't know if it's to make recommendations for cannabis department staffing or what, but it'd be interesting to hear a little bit more about that and whatever directions he's received, and whatever that position would be for. But once again, thank you everybody for your vigorous defense, but I think the judge called it a meritless case. Thank you.
Everybody thought we'd get to good afternoon.
Just rub it in. I, I, I just want to echo what John Brower just said. Thank you for vigorously defending the TAA case. I know it is not over yet, I think we have come through a very good part, the most damaging aspect, I think, has passed, and there still is a case there. And one of the things that maybe as you delve into closed session, worth looking at is how the decision that we made will impact county policy. Because I, I did see, since the decision came up, you know, I get to see all this stuff, probably almost as much as you do, maybe actually even more. Some responses that came out of planning on questions about those categorical exemptions, I talked about a public comment. And one of the responses from the Deputy Director was, our position is that SB 1459, which has basically created the provisional licensing program, is another in a series of stopgap measures that the legislature throws out just when you think you get your handle on everything that there is to know about cannabis, they'll throw you something fresh. But the position was, our position presumably to counties is that 1459 applies only to state licensing, it doesn't impact sequel exemptions at the local level. Which was strange to me, because I never heard that before. Of course, I have heard it in the TAA lawsuit, it is almost verbatim from one of their responses to what the county, and I submitted on behalf of some of the growers, so I just don't want to see this lawsuit looming too large in our county policy. It is what it is, judges rule on it, let's maintain our consistency. So I'm sure you're going to have an engaging, albeit short, discussion in closed session, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Take a three-minute break. We had to clear out a five-minute break.
Okay, board met in closed session, two items, direction was given, evaluation was continued. Adjourned.